We have a call to order our meeting session and ask you to stand please for the debate. Ready to begin?
I am the President, Student Representative of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no report on the two sessions this evening and I ask for a motion to the elder agenda panel. Can you change their additions to the agenda?
There's a change, just a correction to consent item thirteen C. Appreciate the board member pairing for highlighting we had an error in the calculation of the total discipline fact for the belief blueprint, blueprints for effective leadership and instruction for English learners.
And would that change the end total?
It changed the total of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dot twenty-one.
The end total?
End total, correct. It was five eighty-five sixty.
Would that change, all is in favor of the agenda presented?
Aye.
I oppose. We have no recommendations this evening. It's time for a public comment on non-adjourned items. I don't have any blue cards. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? And we move to reports and our first report is a student representative. I have a color gap and a new red.
Yes, so this is Piper. She's also in my grade. So she's the new student board representative. So we'll kind of alternate between both of us or both of us at the same time. So the first two weeks have gone by pretty successfully, I believe. I mean, I'm a junior, so I'd kind of have this wrap up a little bit. So, but before school started, we had a link room, which was, I think, I was in link room. Yeah, so link room was the two weeks or like a week before school started, a couple of weeks before school started, where we had all the freshmen come and kind of got them into the spirit of school so they weren't scared. So they got to see the school and play games with us. So they felt more as a community than just a small freshman coming to the school. And I know it benefited them because I was a freshman and I didn't go to the link room meeting because I thought it was stupid. But I was just, I was like, my mom's like, you should go. I was like, no. And, but I'm really glad that I got to be a part of it because it's really beneficial for them. Because I was so scared that I walked into the wrong classrooms and first day of school and everything. And so link room happened and then there was break again. So the first day of school, link room also wore their T-shirt so that the students that didn't go to link room meeting and didn't have the tour or just still didn't have the whole wrap up, the campus understood that they would come up to us and ask us where classes were and everything. And so I got a couple of kids having me walk them to classes and stuff, but the Mac seemed like they did a really good job. So then now this year, we also have a new drop period. It's ten days instead of fifteen days. And that's ending on Monday. ASB is honing in on the school spirit and they actually painted Point Break in the center. So we have a student section, which I think is really, really cool because a lot of kids are interested in boosting our spirit and pep at every school event so that we can be more of a community than we have been in the past. So this Friday actually is a blackout football game. So we're all black if you guys are gonna go. Then we also have a new student luncheon, which Piper and I are kind of organizing on Friday in the patio next to the office. And you guys can stop by and see the new students that were either juniors, seniors, everyone. So it's not just freshmen getting a little orientation. So now it's a little inclusive of all grades. So, and then we're announcing the homecoming theme at break on Thursday instead of Friday because we're going to Dana Point to see how Dana does their pep assemblies and how, because they're kind of set, they set the stage for ASB and pep because of OCL, which is the Orange Coast League, which is kind of ASB camp. So that we're going to kind of take notes and see what they do to boost our pep assemblies. They have two pep assemblies, so we're going to one of them. So yeah, that's gonna be on Friday. And then Elmore on top of the world have their open houses Wednesday and Thursday. And then Thurston High School follows a couple of weeks after that. And then there was just the fall play auditions last week and they cast the play really quick. We called back some weekend and then the plays casted and our first read-throughs tonight. Yeah, so that's pretty much the first two weeks of school.
Okay, first sports. I play golf. So we played our first golf match yesterday, our, not first, but our first league game and we won. I believe we scored two hundred and twenty-two. The preseason football games, not football, sorry, all sports are starting, or not all sports, but most sports. And then football, just had a game at Big Bear and then like Chloe said, we were playing Orange this Friday home and it's a blackout game. Cross-country, went to Hawaii last week for the Luaney invite. The boys placed fourth and the girls' team placed third. Evie Cam, who's a senior, she won the race by thirty seconds. And, let's see, baseball practice has started and they play mostly all year and surf tryouts all this week.
And to add onto this academic report, we also, well, obviously you guys know, but the English department has implemented No Place For Hate. And so we had conversations about that this weekend in English class. I have Mr. Brobeck and he did a really good job of explaining to students that we're not the only people out there in the world, that we have to respect others and their differences and diversity is a really key concept to our talent and that we should accept and love everyone for who they are. And so he did a really good job of explaining that. And same with the rest of the English departments, what they're gonna continuously do throughout the years so that kids understand the importance of diversity.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
At our last school board meeting, we just had our first day of unconscious bias training. And it's one of the few trainings that we've ever had that all the feedback has been positive on. So all the teachers and staff that attended have come back and said they felt like it was really positive all the way through. Sometimes we lose that momentum by the end, but everyone reported that they felt like it was impactful all the way through. They're hoping to have another opportunity for those teachers that didn't and staff who hadn't had an opportunity to attend. They said the last day, she kind of even finished with the curriculum and so they moved into discussions on privilege rather than just unconscious bias. So they felt like that was very impactful. Everyone wants to extend our gratitude for the great opening of school. They appreciated the breakfast. That was great and that it went quickly and everyone had more time in their classrooms, which they loved. Loved the health fair that they put together. So we won't have anyone complaining that they didn't get the information because everything was there for them. I thought that was really well received. People enjoyed being out there. They really loved the keynote speaker that we had on the brain. I think when he first started speaking, we were all like, wait, what? But it was so impactful, I think, for everyone that was there. Those who got to hear him later really enjoyed that. Our school culture days came back all positive. The teachers said that although they already had good feelings and camaraderie, they felt like among staff members, this just took it all to another level. And elementary loved the high energy of their presenter. I guess it was the wife of somebody. They said it was very high energy that was with them. High school had teachers in tears, a lot of emotion in ours. And great opportunity for to know our new principal in there and for people to connect. And the middle school said, again, they were the ones that said, we feel like we've had strong staff relationships, but this really just helped us take us to the next place. And so everyone felt like this gave us a really strong start to the school year. And the power of us that we've talked about, a lot of things had to come together with technology and student placement and parents dealing with student placement and all of those things that are part of the school year. And then the No Place For Hate is also a great thing because I think it's very impactful for us to be doing something all the way across the district where it starts in elementary and works its way up. And so you shared the high school out of perspective of that, but elementary has also been implementing it as well as the middle school. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm gonna read to you what I sent out to my classified staff. So I'll be brief with it, but administration, some of you have already seen this. But I feel that in communicating with the classified staff so that they know what's going on. And I could add you to the email, but then you'd get more emails than you'd want. So I sent this out a few days ago. It says classified members, welcome to the new school year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. What a great beginning. The unconscious bias training was terrific. Thanks to Dr. Odepo and Ms. Hawkins for arranging the workshop. Two and a half days learning more about the members we work with and understanding ourselves and the way we think and the way we did what we do. Welcome to the fifteen plus, new classified staff. We had a very productive orientation presentation for all new staff. Thank you to HR for providing the information. Our members need to be the very best. And at that time, we are also allowed as association to speak with our members. And there's more to come on that, but I'm not supposed to speak about it at the moment. And back to school breakfast was as usual, a great time to see old friends and meet new friends. Congratulations to Gwen Myers, our school spirit award. We are all aware of your years of commitment and dedication to help USD and the community. And then I took a little excerpt from Dr. Valoria's Themes of Every Student Every Day. Comments about that continuous improvement and focus on relationships. I also went on to say the health fair was very informative and fun and thanked Ms. Winston and her HR team for planning this event. Wednesday's school culture training at each site sparked numerous responses. Truly inspiring, eye-opening, relationships with members I've never had a chance to talk with, and thought provoking, just a few of the comments. Thursday's training for IAs and teachers was inclusive and informative. We are truly prepared to assist our certificate staff at the Bolzmar District. Training for health clerks and PE coaches were also included. The keynote speaker, I put Ken Weston, was so engaging. I hope that you shared your experiences with other members of the team. Everyone just spoke about how incredible he was. And for the IAs, this is written here, IAs in the afternoon session. We were about fifty of us with this incredible speaker who really had us stand up and do lots of things. And you could just see in people's eyes that they were like, wow, and a couple, I've never heard someone so intelligent. You know, because he would go off and he had these slides. And when you really stop and think about how the brain works, it's a really complex organism we have up here, this organ that works for us. So people were just really, I mean, I have to tell you, that was well worth the inclusiveness of bringing in the IAs for that. Have the agenda, because as I said, this went out. And we are also gonna be having site representative workshops immediately following our business meeting. So this has been very important to, I think, our sites more than in the district because we want to make sure that our site representatives are really doing what they're supposed to be doing and at the same time, alerting if there are issues to someone so that we can act on these issues early on. And I and Robert DeWitt will be doing these workshops together and they're gonna be after our meetings. And so I wanted to say a few other things there. But the other things, just, I know kind of this boot grant start in October. So that's our scholarship. So if you see those things going around, you'll know why. And an interesting concept is happening with our Orange County field office that on December fifth, we're gonna be, each negotiation team and another school district, which I don't know if that's been totally decided, will be at the Orange County field office for interest-based marketing. And I don't know why we're missing the certain groups, but it'll be interesting because maybe it'll give them a perspective of how things, the way we do it. And perhaps that things can be done very collaboratively. So I'm hoping that's the direction we're going in. And as Mindy also said, in our orientation for TOW, Mr. Collin, one of the key things was No Place For Hate. And I think as we introduce that to our children and the students that we work with every day, it does bring in the idea that that's just not what we're about. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Do you have representatives from organizations here tonight, the PTA? PTA Council President, Sheila Margaret.
Hi, everyone. Okay, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen PTA Council kicked off our first meeting last Thursday here in the boardroom. And again, this year, the goals of the PTA Council be to continue to focus on resources, training, guidance, and mentoring of our units and as well as promoting, supporting, and providing parent education. Our first PTA Coffee Talk, we rebranded Coffee Break to Coffee Talk. Parent Education Series will be the state of our schools and that is Wednesday, September twentieth at eight thirty till ten AM at Hotel Laguna. And then all of the PTA units will have their first association meetings coming up throughout the month of September. And more information can be found on their individual unit websites about their meetings. And that right now is all that we have to report because we're just getting going. So thank you.
Thank you. Robert, just speak out.
So I really don't have much to report. This is the time of the year where no matter what we do the year before, we start at zero again. So we look forward to maintaining all of our current commitments to you all and also in positioning school power so that we can meet your future requests and priorities as they come up throughout the year. So I brought some dates for you all to save and that's it for me.
Do you have the offices for your executive board or the same?
Yeah, our first trustee, we had a great executive retreat over the summer. It was really inspiring and strategic. We're focusing on young families a lot this year and participation. We have a kind of a crazy ambitious goal of nine hundred families and really focusing on getting even more of the community involved, which I think fantastic focus. Kristen Winter is our new president for this year. Michael Lohan is our vice president. So I think it'll be a really strong year. Our next trustee, our trustee meeting is on the twentieth.
Thank you. Are there any other organizations that have representatives here? If not, we'll move to board members. There hasn't been much going on yet.
I did a, I did a downwind last Friday and Dr. Keller and Dr. Odepo were there and knocked it out of the ballpark. I think it's, the questions that the downwind board asked and the answers that were received, I think, suited themselves. And they were, everyone was very impressed. Dr. Keller is so knowledgeable. And I think everyone feels that the quid pro anima was appropriate and, well, it's gonna be a long, long heat. And I, speaking for myself, I got verklempt again simply because I really think the right people are with us. I think we can really do some good work.
Pete?
Okay, just, we needed to do a vote for the Orange County Committee on the School District Organization, which tackles issues like redistricting, the manner in which school board members are elected, if it's representing a certain part of the city or the city as a whole. Like in Brail, then they reduced from nine board members down to five and how they're trying to figure that out. Boundary changes, disputes among school districts, and also requests from different county groups. Luckily, there were three openings and only three people running. So there was no reason to run around and meet everybody. And so I hope you guys are okay with just voting for the three that would like to do this. I provided it. One is from Gooden McGill for District Five. That's Sheila Enkie. And there's one from Fullerton and I forget where they are. They've all been on for a while. And then the Community Coalition today and also Dr. Keller and Dr. Allman were there. And they were excited about everything that our district is doing, No Place For Hate, all those things. And then there were a lot of different services there talking about offering what they can do. They help students and young people, Orange County Health Services, California Youth Services. Mission Hospital is doing an introduction to mindfulness for eleven to fifteen-year-olds and their parents. So they're doing the intro and then a six-week course for people. And they talked about it being kind of like a superpower because if you can get hold of that part and stop anger and just think and go on with things, it really does give you power. They also took Dr. Valoria's suggestion and reached out to send Yogito clients. They're looking at what they did that made the most impact. And I guess their driving program was kind of number one. So looking at that, maybe try something like that. Mission Hospital is also doing a parent date night again, two times a year, where a student can have a night just with their parents. They provide dinner and then a speaker. Like they did Dale Carnegie last year, which was really well, well received, as well as Ray Lazzana. And then they are also offering kind of a forty about five-minute class on the influence of media and advertising. So you're looking at, you know, the six main persuasive techniques, you know, teaching students how, how to think critically about it, how to deconstruct an ad. So that's another offering that they have.
Thank you. I attended the first PTA council meeting and they were all there enthusiastic. I already talked about how much membership they have. After two days.
Right.
Because they do it in the register and online or fill out their forms online. And then Sheila didn't mention, but they changed along with that coffee talk that if you join the PTA, that you don't pay to move to the premises. So that's increased PTA membership, but also to encourage you to attend. I think when they started videoing, they dropped some attendance. So this way they'll encourage. Anyway, it was a good meeting and they're all being very ambitious. There's a lot of new people stepping up in leadership sessions. Thurston's peak day is tomorrow, right Jenny? They have a new president. We do. Jimmy Azadian?
Azadian.
Azadian, right. And that was it for me. I just wanna, carrying Mindy and Margaret's feet, I think that it was, I don't know whose idea it was to really personalize the professional development, but it obviously was really successful. And I think when we got that printout, all the different things offered on those culture days, that thing. But whatever the title was, it obviously really was well received, but it was very meaningful. So that, rather than having just one for everybody. So, good job. Thank you so much.
First and foremost, thanks to the school board for allowing us to have the various presenters that we were able to bring in. So between Phil Boyd and his staff that reported through the contract back in late spring, to have him come and help us do culture days at all of our school sites, as you heard, it was very well received from staff. To our guest speaker about the brain, who I think people honestly, even though it was hot in that theater, could have stayed there much, much longer. Myself included, he was, just his approach. And I mean, when he was, he said, close your eyes because he was going through all the slides because he was trying to hit some key things and his, he probably had, I don't know, two hundred-plus slides that he could have covered of material. And it was very, all very interesting stuff. And so I might have much appreciation to Alicia, Dr. Odepo and her staff for putting together that personalized day. That really did meet the needs of all of our staff who were out there supporting our kids and our students on a day-to-day basis. So great work all the way around. It's been a really positive start. Thanks to my staff and administrators, classified staff, certificate staff. Really, it's, we are focused on our students. We're focused on them every day and that's what we're gonna continue to do. The No Place For Hate work that spawned out of really some of our teachers who wanted to bring forward a continuum of K-12 conversation and shared language. And it was something that Dr. Odepo and I were able to work with and help support. But really, it's great to see the teachers behind and really wanting to do this in their classrooms on a day-to-day basis. So special thanks to Don Honeycutt, to Dr. Allman and staff at the high school for their work. Jenny Solberg and her staff, I know, are already planning, as Jenny always does. Chris and Mike as well with their teachers, Sir Woolsey, Mary Blanton, I know, have been in constant conversation about how we're gonna really make this meaningful, that our kids are gonna see this every day in our interactions. So again, so it's just, it's just nice to see and to hear such positive things coming from that work. We are still processing our residency verifications and our data confirmations and our school sites are working through that. It's the process that we have and I know that it can be tedious at times and we appreciate our families that are doing that done. I was gonna welcome Piper. I know they had to step out and Chloe. We are working to have them continue to stay on and be more part of our board meetings. And we will be expecting the future board meetings that they will be sticking on, be part of those discussions, especially when there's items that they were very interested in, which they had some last year that I knew they were interested in, so.
I think that's just a habit because I didn't excuse them.
Yes. We talked about that a little bit.
They actually contacted us.
I know.
And then last but not least, special thanks to Lance Neal, our amazing athletic director of the high school, who helped put on a workshop for our coaches and coaches all throughout the region and athletes. We hosted it Saturday and just a lot of work. Not only were we kicking off our sports season and all the work that goes into that, Lance is just goes above and beyond.
Did go well.
And it went well and we won't host it again. So I was doing, I think Lance is able to get, I think they're gonna host it in Tustin at the, there's a center, a learning center there that is a great place next year. But we were able to do that, had speakers coming in and again, just a lot of work. So it's nice to have other coaches and people come in and see our facilities. The comments, like traditionally here, when they're inside and outside of our classrooms, again, testament to the emphasis that we put and US school board put on our facilities, top-notch. You know, when you walk into the new four, new four CLE classrooms throughout all of our campuses, but especially at the high school, those new English classrooms are just amazing. So again, thanks for all the work. It does not happen like that. Takes time and deliveries and putting furniture together and all those things. So it's a great start.
Just a couple of things. Our hiring is almost complete. So we have just the last few positions for finishing up. So we've almost got everybody in the right seat, plus. And then I just wanted to mention the volunteer process, the new volunteer procedures that we're rolling out in accordance with the new board policy that you revised last spring is going very well. We've had several parents who have been very responsive to the new process and are getting their fingerprints done. Those who will be going on our overnight trips. I think the first one is Thurston Science Camp. And I just want to say Lisa Breakfast is doing a great job staying on top of all of that. And I also wanted to thank the principals for rolling out communication consistently to parents to keep them informed and to keep getting the information out in front of them about the new procedures. And to Andy Crisp, who just did a promotional video for us. So we'll be able to share that on social media and it'll be on our new volunteer page on our website where we have all of the information about the new procedures.
Okay, since Coach Neal's still here, I wanna say, as you'll know, on the consent item, item F, there's a donation because there's a lot of excitement around the new program you had approved for us. So thank you. That second meeting in May, you had fully approved all the funding needed for these programs and we're already getting donations so that we can purchase additional equipment and expedite some of the purchases we had planned in future years. So thank you for your support of the programs. And I know Coach Neal and I are both always happy to receive money and extra funding. The Top of the World modular buildings are gonna start their first delivery this Saturday. So Mr. Zeta back there has worked very closely with the police department as they do require full escorts. Due to how trans restrictions, they come in actually between, what is it, Brian, midnight and two AM.
They have to be off the streets by six o'clock. So by six o'clock, they have to be off the one thirty-three or post five.
So we worked out a staging plan. Parks of Park Avenue will have no parking allowed. And Ryan has been working on distributing wires to all of our neighbors. This will happen.
That's what that was.
This will happen.
I thought it was a lot, but it didn't have it.
Yes, the utility companies are gonna be on site. They're gonna potentially have to lift some wires and it's gonna happen this Saturday and next Saturday.
What time? This is the kind of stuff I get.
Seven thirty AM and.
I know. And I'm bending my time. They have to be out by six.
They'll be, they'll be driving a park right around seven thirty for our first loading.
Oh, yes, I love this time.
Yes.
Three at nine.
It's such a morning.
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 They're gonna stage them off the one thirty-three.
Oh, because they don't have to be.
Correct. They'll be off the interstate at that point. They'll stage them out at the entrance to, to the Gunning Canyon. They will load two first, just so we make sure we don't bring all of the trucks in at once and have a problem. People start with two and see how it goes. And then if anything goes well, we'll bring the rest of them in shortly thereafter, so.
Sort of exciting on Saturday.
Sadly, this is the kind of stuff I get.
I know, but they don't still let us. I'll answer, they moved on.
No, I think they've moved on. I hope they've moved on. Last update I have is regarding. Last update I have is regarding Senate Bill 751, which had to do with the reserve cap. Now, there's good news on the front, where CTA and CSBA have reached a deal as the bill's been amended, and it raises the cap, but it still exempts basically in school districts. It's expected to make it to the governor's office for signature, and because those two organizations are behind it now together, hopefully we have some good news and it gets all the way through. So I'll provide more update as we find out more, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone.
Good evening. So congratulations again to our administrators for a great start. As a reminder, we have back to school night at TOW on Wednesday and Almora on Thursday. But I do think congratulations are due to our full day kinder teachers, they're really excited about that change. Dr. Keller and I met with Almora staff on the first full day of kinder. They were a little tired, but.
The staff.
They, they were probably thinking of staying a step ahead of their students, so we're excited with them. Just a quick announcement, that Kinto's will start on October 2nd, and we're excited about that. And the dyslexia guidelines are out, so Irene and her committee are well underway with their work of screeners and identifying best placement for students and identifying ways to close gaps sooner. So, thank you.
Is there any news at all that starts and they will have to vote today?
The assembly was going to vote on it today, it didn't make it for a vote today. Mary Sheney's more likely to butt it by the end of this week, so there's a good chance tomorrow. And then it will go back to the senate, because there was an amendment, because they added one which related to agreements that we have. So a sort of updated agreement, so you can trump the labor agreement that would have existed. So they've gotten some language around that. So we'll see what, where it ends up, we should never go there.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight, so I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's any input. Public hearing to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2017/18 and certification of revision of standards aligned and structural materials in sections 60119 and 60422. This public hearing was posted on August 31st, and we'll have a resolution to vote on it as action item 15. Is there any comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, that will close the public hearing and move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items that our members would like to call on the consent calendar? Then I'd ask for a motion on, I'll say, I'll leave comment on the consent calendar. Consent calendar items A through K with the correction received on the pro per item C. So let's move into the second, here on the calendar. Are there any small questions? Long favor? Hi. Opposed. There's five little, seven information items tonight, presentation of the report of summer school 2017. Is this solution this year's?
Yes, so I'd like to invite Nicole King, Dustin Gowen and Stacy Currie up to the private podium. As they come, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work that they did in summer school, they were quite extraordinary. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. This year I was fortunate enough to be the principal of K-12 summer school. I have with me my coordinators, Stacy Currie was the coordinator of nine through twelve, and Dustin Gowen, K-8. Amazing job of coordinators, and I'm so grateful for them. Our attendance data was pretty impressive. LBHS had first session, eighty-nine students attended, second session seventy-five. We have nineteen courses available. For credit recovery, we had one hundred and twenty-six students participating in credit recovery. Odyssey Ware Online, that's also credit recovery, we had seven students. Gradpoint, which is our new online credit recovery program, we had fifty-eight students participating. So it's sort of our pilot summer to prepare for this year as we rolled it out. We had nineteen students participate in advancement, that's our Gov Econ class. For ELD, we had four students. Breaker Advance was a new program that some teachers and Dr. Odebo put together this summer. We had twenty students participate in that, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a second. And for special education, we had two students participate. At TMS, we had one hundred and fifty-three students. SDC, we had eighteen students. ELD, we had thirty-five students. That's very exciting, preparing for the school year, so having that language development course was wonderful to provide that for them. Elementary students, we had a hundred and three. Middle school, ELA in math, we had thirty-two. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about our summer class that the teachers and Dr. Odebo put together. Breaker Advance, it was an introduction to AP classes for students who wouldn't normally take an AP class. It was a five-day workshop with essential skills focused on all disciplines, reading comprehension note-taking, writing, critical thinking, math analysis and science skills. It encouraged those students, it gave them kind of a taste of it, to excite them about taking a rigorous class, and it provided the teacher support that they needed in order to even think about taking one of those. They had a field trip to UCI genetics lab to investigate cancer cells. They discussed this in a novel that they read. Students were very excited about this, they took a million photographs. As you can see, they were completely engaged in every, every photograph that I saw. They were able to meet with the lab personnel and really get a personal experience, giving them that schema for that text that they read. And I just, I, I wanna say, if you've had the chance to walk through any of the summer school classes, phenomenal. It didn't matter, K-12, on day one, they hit the ground running. Those teachers had those students engaged and learning and excited. And if you got a chance to go up to TMS where they had the elementary, I couldn't believe they transferred, transformed middle school classrooms into elementary classrooms. I mean, they had decorations on the walls and they brought in trucks full of stuff. I mean, moving out was, I just, I was just so impressed with that stuff, so. Phenomenal stuff, phenomenal programs, and I was fortunate to be a part of it, thank you very much. Stacy?
First of all, I wanna say thank you very much for letting me graduate from K-8 and move to the high school. It was very nice, I really enjoyed working with the older students and the high school staff. We did implement a couple of things, we ran a similar program capacitors with direct instruction, and that was with geometry with Ms. Swanson. We had English with Mr. Hendrickson, we had our ELD and our SPED, and of course, our nice advancement course with Econ and Government. And I spent a little bit of time talking to the students that was Econ and Gov students, and I asked, why are you spending your summer doing this? And they shared, it just opens up that opportunity their senior year to take an additional class, which then allows them to be a little bit more sparkling to the colleges. So they do appreciate, so thank you for continuing that program for our students. And also our social studies. Because we're one-to-one, we were able to see a lot more students lived direct construction utilizing their one-to-one devices. In addition to our direct instruction, we were able to pilot Gradpoint, which is our new credit recovery program at the high school. And we were able then to combine Algebra I and Algebra II into the same classroom, and we supported them with a credential teacher as well as myself, I would come by and give an apple. In one of the Algebra II classes at the beginning of our first session, one of the students asked me, Ms. Currie, do you think second session I can do pre-calculus? I'm like, well, I don't know, you've never offered pre-calculus in summer school, but it's on Gradpoint, so let's take a peek. And I looked at the curriculum, and I said, it looks like it's similar to our second semester, however, it has a little physics. He says, oh, I'm not a pro of physics. And he was able to complete his remediation of pre-calculus during our summer program, so I was impressed with that. Something else that we were able to add that we haven't had for quite a while were the sciences, biology and chemistry, because Gradpoint offers a live lab. So they were able to actually do the lab during their summer program, so kids were able to recover those credit units as well. Students were able to work on their own pace, so we did not have a teacher saying they need to be on this page on this day. Kids who finished early were able to leave once they were done with their final, which is kind of a nice incentive. And students who actually needed an extra couple of days, we were able to extend that into our second session of summer school. So we were really able to meet the needs of our own students. There were online tutorials, plus they were able to access other tutorials because of their one-to-one devices. And I was just really impressed with the program, and I appreciate it, and it was nice that Jason shared his school with me. Thank you.
Okay, so I coordinated the K-8 summer school, and one of the big instructional shifts that we emphasized this summer was station teaching. That's where you take a vertically aligned lesson and you kind of station that horizontally, so kids can move activity to activity while increasing their engagement and covering a wide variety of curriculum within the same amount of time. So that was an emphasis this year, and we found it to be pretty successful. As was reported earlier, the engagement in the classes were pretty phenomenal. We were able to utilize our new adoptions for ELA in elementary, and then our already adopted, and also some of our new adopted programs for middle school as well. The supplemental materials, we've utilized them in the past, but they have new programs that are utilizing them in slightly different ways, like with ReadWorks.org, there was a program called Article of the Day, and kids were able to read really high interest and engaging articles that were at kind of set Lexile levels to really expand their engagement and increase the rigor. But work on main idea and key details, like really get solid on summarizing. We utilized Lexia and My Access, which are some digital curriculum that have some AI features to them. The emphasis in math was basically core curriculum with RTI materials, adaptive curriculum, and then also I did a lot of coaching with Maxwise, which increases algebraic reasoning and fact fluency with elementary school students. We continue our relationship with the Crystal Cove Conservancy, and facilitated field trips to Crystal Cove that were in GSS space. So we had several different X-rays fans go and participate on lessons that we created last summer that we were able to refine, and then we created some new lessons this summer as well. And so kind of lead us to our outcomes. I'd say across the board, we had some really positive outcomes. The secondary had favorable literacy outcomes, the foundational skills especially. Primary math showed the greatest gains, and we had some phenomenal teaching, and I think the emphasis on foundational math skills was very solid. And then I was really pleasantly surprised by the writing gains in our intermediate grades.
And we just wanna thank the board for the support and the principals for the support. Jenny, thank you so much for the use of your school. Phenomenal staff, the engagement, the enrichment that goes on during summer school is, I've never seen anything like it. We're just, we're fortunate to have that in our school districts, and we just thank you so much for letting us be a part of it, so thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
Just wondering, the students that are, that are invited to come to summer programs, they need the remediation. How many did you get? I mean, I know you gave us the numbers of how we came, but were there some that didn't come?
I'm sure there are some that chose not to come, I can get you those numbers if you like. I can look at the invitation list.
I'm just curious how, that's been a challenge, is to, you know, we, we make offer, but they don't always, I shouldn't say the students, the parents don't always take advantage of. So I'm just, was curious how it was, if we had the same improvement in that area of emphasizing to the parents how important it is, so.
Certainly looked.
Just a curiosity, and I was just wondering, how, how do you feel that is added to your effectiveness by using so many of these online programs?
I think it allows the students the freedom and the flexibility to work at their own pace, and I think that's highly valuable. As a student that struggled in math myself, I think it would have been nice to slow down, re-watch the tutorial, freeze it, you know, try it myself and go back. I think you see a lot of students that love that ability, or they can go home, maybe today is not their day, they can go home and re-watch that lesson. And then they also had the added bonus of not only having their teacher, but they also had Ms. Currie, who came through their classrooms every day. She was faithful to go in there, if they needed extra support, she was there for them. So I think the, the online programs are beneficial, and they could also, they have that carrot of finishing and leaving as soon as they were complete with their entire study program, so.
So Stacy, you were saying this is the one student who was doing Algebra II, and then you, that you said, were you planning on, on using the pre-calculus?
No, we weren't even anticipating it at first.
So this was just a serendipitous experience.
Right, and he initiated the conversation, I'm like, well, let me look into it, let me, let me make sure the curriculum somewhat aligns, and we looked at the both semesters, and we made a remediate second semester. We had a dialogue, we talked with Alicia, and we said, why not we have the curriculum, it's there, let's start using it as it needs of our students, and this way he was able to pass his pre-calculus class. And now as a senior, he's in calculus, instead of having to repeat pre-calculus.
And how long on our beach? Because I, I honestly didn't realize there were two sessions at the high school, so.
Right, so it's twelve days for each session, one semester's twelve days and then twelve days. So it's a lot of math, but what I found is really beneficial, it is not initial instructions. So it is reviewing what you have been taught in the classroom. And I did have a parent question me about the online program, and I did talk to the parent, reiterated that I go through the classroom, which was beneficial. I am credentialed, I've taught all the way through calculus, but I also shared that it's not initial instruction.
That's, and that's, that, that helps me, that makes sense to me now.
You know, if it was initial instruction, I as a teacher would have worries, because how are you going to learn something in twelve days? How are you gonna do pre-calculus in twelve days? It's a lot, you know, there's a lot of trig, there's a lot of involvement. But because it is, you know, maybe he didn't get a test, or maybe something, maybe there was a bad day, or a couple of bad days, who knows what may have caused a bad grade? Because it's one semester for him in pre-calculus, but he was able to go through it, get a good grade. And what's nice about Gradpoint, it has a cut point. Initially, if you didn't hit that eighty percent, you weren't allowed to progress to the next unit. You had to hit that eighty percent, which was nice, because then they're showing more proficiency than say a sixty percent.
And I'm so faithful to that she's, she was knowledgeable with the program, so she could look at the pre-calculus and she knew whether she could help the student or not. And so that was a factor in it, do we have support for the student on campus while they take it? Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to offer it, so thank you very much. She was very careful when she looked through the program to make sure that we could support the student.
I can see how the students that needed remediation would really be helped by this flexibility, like you said, so they could see something over again, look through things that they got.
And we didn't.
It was wonderful to be able to offer that to them.
Yeah, and we didn't stop them. If they could finish first semester, we let them go a couple of days into second semester, however long they needed, and that was amazing, so.
All about flex, Dylan.
All about the kids. Thank you.
Now we move to our action items, and our first item, item fifteen, approval of resolution number seventeen eighteen for education code sections 60119 and 60422 to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2017/18 and certification of revision of standards aligned and structural materials. This is what we just had a public hearing on.
I'd like to commend our sites for their work in certifying that we have enough instruction materials for all of our students. I really appreciate their support.
Any public comment on this item? On the next one, motion please. Hello? Any discussion? Hall of favor?
Hi. I propose.
Item sixteen, action item sixteen, number N, of understanding between Capital and Unified School District and the Vinnevee Unified School District for Special Education Services. Is that okay?
Thank you. So in it, we've been, drew ourselves on it, we've been working with Southback Valley, but in addition, this offers us the opportunity to work with Capital and Unified School District to broaden our options for students, so we appreciate your consideration of this. So it's not getting rid of one.
That's correct. And at one time, any public comment on this item? Motion please. Hello? Second. Any more discussion? At one time, we were in Southback, correct?
Correct.
Oh, we were?
Yes, yes.
You, how many years ago? Oh, that's really well down the. Oh, okay. Okay. August favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Action item seventeen, Google Social Skills Facilitation Project for the Boys and Girls Club of Vinnevee in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred.
That's correct, this is the Social Skills Facilitation Project, yes, but it has been in place for several years, initially covered by a school powered by Edith District, funded at this time, we appreciate your support.
Any public comment? More questions?
It's a great program.
Motion, please.
Second.
Any more discussion?
It is a great program.
It's a great program.
It's, I know they're really excited with some other people that they've gotten on the grant, is that playworks, is that? That they are interested in really adding to what they do, like that, and they want us to connect them on the panel. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie's five oh. Action item nineteen, approval superintendent's employment contract.
Eighteen?
I said eighteen? Well. Mine are sticking together. It's a test, sorry. Eighteen, create position of instructional assistant, special ed for five point seven five hours per day, ten lengths per year.
You said? So as it happens this time of year, we have new students coming in and so we had a student move in who has an IEP that requires a full day of instructional support that we're obligated to provide for the IEP. So our current resources are currently assigned to other school locations and for other students, so we have the need to have another staff member.
Public comment? Any motion, please? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Now, approval superintendent's employment contract number one. We've all had that information in the grant on its previously. The proposed terms, the attached in there include a one-year extension of the original agreement, increasing the three-year term to end thirty twenty twenty, a salary of two forty-nine, three fifty based on two hundred and forty-five day work year, as well as a one-time payment of one percent of base salary in accordance with the compensation package provided to the certificate of management group. In an effort to maintain equity with other certificate and administrative personnel, the superintendent shall receive a salary increase each year of this agreement based on the average percentage increase given on the administrative salary schedule for a separate column raise. In addition, the superintendent will continue to receive the following fringe benefits, district health and welfare benefits, same as provided to certificate management employees, professional dues in the amount of eighteen hundred, as well as monthly expenses allowance of two fifty to cover such expenses as cell phone, internet, and other expenses that naturally are inferred as superintendent to pretend to conduct the district's business. I would just add to that, I think it's important in our background paragraph, that we identify the areas of providing strong leadership, developing community relationships, business and fiscal oversight, and leadership development and mentoring. And I think that our positive here and our good start to the issue reflects our evaluation. Any public comment? More questions? Motion, seven seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Action item twenty, approval school-connected organizations for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Thank you, Madam President. This is in accordance with Board Policy twelve thirty, which we approved in January. This is listing all the organizations that we can foresee for the year that we will allow to use our sites to fundraise on their own behalf. I would like to point out that under PTA, those are just examples of some PTA events. It covers all of PTA events, we just wanted to give some examples of some of the primary ones that we used in grades last year. If we do have organizations that reach out to us that are out on this list, then bring them to you on a one-by-one basis or we'll group them together the best we can for your prior to the year.
Public comment? More questions? Motion, please. Carol, any more discussion? Just as I just said, this was to tighten up the process where we know that things need to be vetted or have a procedure to go through before we bring these organizations on the fundraising apparatus. And for PTA, it's their girl, you know, with that process, it's better.
Yeah, to note that, I mean, one of the challenges that we face is when we approve a connected organization of fundraisers on behalf of the school district in a way, and of our students. There are, with that, the implications that we will help monitor and/or ensure that they are doing it in the best nature of what their position is. So PTA has always been fantastic. They have processes procedures in place. We are working with our athletic boosters and performing arts boosters to ensure that our processes fall in line with our requirements as well as a school district to ensure fidelity programs. So all these other programs as well exist. We have rules related to how we receive donations, how money is counted. It's, those are all things that we are obligated as well to follow when we fundraise, when we have an outside group potentially, whether it's the Green Manta Center, where we simply pass them the money across, which is easier. If we have to bring money into our accounts, it becomes more cumbersome, but we have the ability to do that and we just have to look through those steps. So we have audit guidelines, it's also part of our experiment to follow, so.
I was kind of, so do we audit this?
We do not audit and however, part of the, we're working on kind of cleaner guidelines around what we recommend as a school district around auditing. Many of the groups have, there's outside groups, our masters, for example, there are some entities, but for our boosters organizations, we would recommend, highly recommend. And in fact, there are some school districts that request audits from their booster organizations just because, again, they're fundraising on behalf of our students and we're authorizing that. So there's a, just an extension. So again, we're working through that, but we work through with our groups to ensure and continue to make it so supportive and monitoring for our kids. I mean, that's the point, that we want to make sure that our kids are the ones getting the dollars and we're able to support that moving forward, so.
PTAs do do.
PTA is as part of, right, as part of A P T.
So they're similar to that.
So we have a sample out that we're working with, again, Lang's house, the booster handbook that he's created for athletics that Jeff and I have both been looking at and we've been talking to our auditors as well to ensure that we are in line with what we need to be doing as well. So our auditors happen to be here right now, visiting, not right now.
Oh, they're still here working right now.
They were here pretty late, actually. We told them they had to leave because we had to work, but they were here and they give us a lot of feedback as well related to process procedures and accounting, so.
Any other questions, discussion? Aldous and David?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Action item twenty-one, approval twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, not audit actuals. Yes.
Thank you, President Vickers. The first slide you'll see here, I have four short slides. This is the same presentation formatted the same as last year. It summarizes what you see in the, on the unaudited actuals. You can see our timeline here. We began our budget adoption, of course, July one. This is a reflection of last fiscal year, so you know it's an eighteen-month cycle. We had our first interim report, our second interim, and this is the point that we're at today with the unaudited actuals that needs to be done prior to September fifteenth. And then as Dr. Valeria mentioned, our auditors are here this week, so according to this timeline, back to before the middle of December with their report. The first section you'll see is that we did meet our no child left behind maintenance of effort, which is to expand more than fifty-five percent for Unified School District on classroom instruction. We were just over fifty-five percent, which is almost identical to where we were last year. GAN limit will be a separate item and I'll go into more detail on that, but we are, we do have a slight raise in the GAN limit, about half of what we did last year. And our indirect cost rate for fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen was a little over five and a half percent. So as you can see, this is where we were going to highlight our change in fund balance. And I think one of the important areas that I want to highlight on this is our year-end change in fund balance was a positive a little over one point eight million. But within that, about half of that is, needs to be counted for with the raise that was provided to staff and total compensation and the one percent off schedule. So it's a little over nine hundred thousand. We're still in the process of applying that for our first interim to report back to you. But a good chunk of that is to support the raises and then in addition to that, we had a fairly good carryover with our donations and school hard grants, which are unassigned. However, I should say they're unrestricted, but they're assigned. And then you'll also see information on our other funds, you have Cafeteria Fund, Adult Ed, Fund Seventeen, which one note that I bring up, I want to bring up today that is going to be a constant message, our budget is growing year over year. And with that, we need to be mindful of our basic A differential. So it's very likely, and we are looking at it closely, but that we will need to start beginning more contributions in the Fund Seventeen so that we keep with the board requirement on the board policy relating to the basic A differential calculation. Then of course, you have our Fund Forties, which you see the ending fund balances up there. Those are as of June thirtieth, which as you know, the top of the world project is ongoing right now, so the CIP fund is actually a little bit lower than that since we just made a large payment towards our vendor. And with that, I'm sorry, I usually have a question slide, but are there any questions that I can answer?
Well, I have a question. The Aliso property.
Yes.
Will we be able to sweep anything out of that this year or will it be negligible?
Yes, thank you. I found the, I'm sorry, the amortization schedule, which gives us the exact amount that we could pull down based on the loan amount and it's about two hundred and fifty thousand that we need to want to make. And so one of the thought processes we had, and we'll bring this, more information on this later, is that we sweep that into Fund Seventeen now, obviously.
Great lines. Thank you. Any public comment? Motion, please. More discussion? Thank you, Jeff.
That's it.
You did understand it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Our action item twenty-two, approval authorize an increase of the annual not-to- exceed amount one hundred and seventy thousand with Atkinson, Anderson, Lloyd, and Rondo for legal services beginning February first, twenty seventeen, and ending June thirtieth each year for the twenty-day agreement ending January twenty first, twenty twenty.
President Vickers, so we've had some unexpected legal issues and as a result, we had to increase our not-to- exceed that was originally brought to you for Atkinson, Allison, Boyd, and Rondo. Say that. Wednesday. And what this also is going to do is going to put this on a fiscal year, I'm sorry, I'm having, thank you, fiscal year scheduled before it was on the calendar year. So in addition to increasing the not-to- exceed for just this year, we'll bring it back again as of July one next fiscal year and hopefully it will have to be as high of a not-to- exceed amount.
Public comment? More questions? Motion, seven seconds. Any discussion? Carol? Aldous and David?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Item twenty-three, approval resolution number seventeen nineteen, increase twenty sixteen seventeen GAN limit by seven hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars eighty-two cents and adoption of the twenty sixteen seventeen and twenty seventeen eighteen district appropriations subject to GAN limits. And we'll simplify that.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So this goes back to proposition four back in nineteen seventy-nine. It took effect in nineteen eighty, so I was almost born.
That's hard.
But essentially what this is, it's a limitation on the tax appropriation between public entities that includes school districts and the state of California. So by raising our GAN limit, we're therefore reducing the GAN limit that the state has. So we're transferring our appropriation limit to the state of California so that we don't have to send back any of our tax dollars. It's, the state always has a higher GAN limit than we do as school districts, so as we approach and surpass our GAN limit from the previous year, which is the case this year and it was in the previous year, we go back with the resolution to increase it and transfer it.
That was simple. I appreciate it. Any public comment? More questions?
Motion.
Seven seconds. Carol, any discussion? Aldous and David?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Action item twenty-four, approval resolution number seventeen twenty-eight, temporary inter-fund transfer of six ninety from the Special Reserve to Long Capra, Aliso, and Seventeen to the General Fund.
President Vickers, this is something we do annually. It's based on our property tax receipts, which are by higher, by high, by far the way our highest revenue. And what we will do is do a temporary borrow from ourselves from Fund Seventeen and we'll come back to you in usually January with an informed information item stating that we have put the money back into two funds. So again, this is just for cash flow based on our timing of property tax receipts.
Or public comment? Any further questions?
So do you come back for action for, for this, that, for this consideration, just to tell us, just, so that's Ken and I, I mean, picky people.
Yes.
Ask it specifically come at a board meeting so that we can make sure the public that it's a subject.
I was trying to have a thoughtful thought.
It's what?
I was just asking about that.
You'll see it in the monthly financial statements after that price line and it keeps us from having to issue a transfer, which many other districts have to do in order to meet the pay.
And that costs us.
And that costs three percent of right interest.
Because we did that for many years before we made it, we was all of ourselves. I would ask the public comments that.
Motion, seven seconds. Carol, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Here's my vote. Okay. Hey, we have a lot to say. So I defied board member request. I am for future meetings, request information and general comments.
I got it for football and my high school on Thursday. It was, at elementary school, it was wonderful to see mindfulness being taught as like a lesson and then mindfulness actually applied in lessons. But it was really interesting to see how as it builds, as the program builds, it's just built in versus teaching what it actually means, right? And then later it's just part of, just part of the day, part of the teacher's lesson, and so that was wonderful. And then watching group math was fun. But that was really different than I remember back, right? Because of the reading and the listening.
I don't remember math, so.
And so that was nice to see. And then it was really interesting to see elementary school kids couldn't hear less if you walked into the class. They could hear you all the day. The high school kids, it's like, can they get in? Just, right, we're not interrupting today, so why are they all, oh, what's going on? It was interesting to try to squeeze in and it's better to see them kind of like come here. And then so notable was furniture, it just transformed spaces. And with some of the teachers, I bet they did not let clear it out all the years of their stuff, that they didn't do that process. But like, boy, going in the room, like for kids, had to not be overwhelmed by all that stuff, right? And so that was really fascinating. And the furniture is a streamline and everyone uses it differently. It gets in the ground a bit differently, the teacher's playing differently. And so it was wonderful to see. And then I did get to hear the keynote speaker, which is amazing. And I got to go to a couple of the different classes when Dr. Keller was teaching, lollipop moments. So, and I thought I was going to cry, I thought, oh no, I can call manager my lollipop moments too, I watched it, observe it, right? And it was nice, I was just observing, like, but it was really interesting for, as a group, for them to all reach back into their lives and share a moment. Where's so many of the difference in their life? And for them to do that as a group in the house, one person said, I do that daily for myself. And that's really neat. Like she rests on her own day, finds her lollipop before she goes to sleep. And I thought, oh, I should practice that. Practice. And the other ones where they're talking about the brain and applying what they're learning in this. Once you learn something, it's very hard to, for the brain to do it the other way. And they're doing it by writing a mirror upside down, like in track was in the mirror down and then doing it to be able to then read it in a mirror and stuff. And the fact that once you learn how to write with one hand and once you learn how to sort, it's really different, write another way. And it really did give insights to help them just applying what they learned about the brain and then applying it in a moment was, was fascinating, really, it was. They were so, everyone in the rooms were so connected with each other. They were so, that everyone in the rooms were so connected with each other and remembered on the top of their head. The staff, whether they knew each other or not, it all seemed so much more connected. The tasks they're doing, the story they're sharing, it was like, it was, it was their home day. Their day to talk about them, right, and they're very careful themselves, just.
I'm just curious, um, Jason now having a, Dr. Gloria, very fancy, um, having a contract that actually has step a column and getting normed for that. I would be interested to see what, what other districts we may be around regarding assistant superintendents and other administrate, other administrators as to are they out of contract, because I will reiterate, we have the right to call them unless right now. I'm very, very confident of that. And so, I, um, it's, if, and if, just if you would explore that for me, I would be really appreciative. I cannot tell you how excited I am about Memphis for Hate. I think the common language, the shared K-12 experience, TK-12, is going to be so impactful and just such a, not that we weren't doing great things before, but the fact that it's going to be common and continuous, I just think is, is incredible. I would really like it when people get married to other people's kids in the district. I e, Katie Myers, who married Stacy's son. If, if, because I'm like, who is Katie Chiardi? They got the wrong person here, so if we can just get it up, if that kind of stuff happens, if one of the kids opts to, they're like, wait a minute.
And then we sort of each other.
They have them, and sure, they all knew. And I'm, and I'm like, I'm writing my grade, but, oh, man, look, if I call them and tell them that they're made there, and then I'm like, oh, boy. Just, uh, and I would just like to congratulate Jeff, um, for really settling into his role as, as, um, uh, because he's not tan anymore. No, just like, just when we were speaking, I was like, oh, he's really, he's really.
He's in the, a superintendent.
So, just really, it's not going on notes. Just have to throw that out there. I got you back.
Let's see, I had the chance to go with Dr. Allman and also, um, Mr. Villenger around the high school campus at lunchtime, and, and I was so impressed with the way they both and other adults were interacting with kids, and how many kids already knew Dr. Allman? And, you know, kids in all kinds of different areas, but kind of checking out the spaces and looking to see how we can add some more seating. But it's all being looked at in a, you know, very thoughtful, what so-called still look nice. And then I also have these on October seventh, go a lot, kind of dovetailing into no place for Hate. They will have that exhibit on main beach on the cobblestone of all of the, yeah, all of the student, you know, young people who have committed suicide because of bullying. And I have some postcards about that, and they're looking for volunteers. And I'm not sure what the volunteers do, but in letters, um, put these out there.
I have a couple small things. Uh, I shared with Dr. Gloria this little article I came across, feeling then that I was really guilty of this, that how parents, uh, create meth anxiety in their kids. By, uh, particularly being empathetic, you think as a parent that you're saying, yeah, I really had a hard time with the doctors who, instead, that actually can increase the child's meth anxiety. So, we think we're, you know, maybe something that we can, in some ways, pass on to parents. If you think you're just being that real supportive person, then actually it's, it's not even better for them. And, uh, another was, um, I just keep reading all this concern about the extreme abuse, and particularly in some states, but around this area. And so, as we talk about all these things, I think that somehow to get the message out to parents, because that's, that's, um, a middle age age group is huge on that usage. And so, they need to make sure whatever they're taking, that it's locked, so that their students don't have access to it in the home. And that's, it's kind of a, one of those quiet things that you don't see as much, because it's, you can't smell it like alcohol, but it's really, really destructive. So, I wanted to add that to our list of what we, um, we don't do, but whoever informs parents of these, you need to be careful what they're smiling about. And then I did meet, uh, with the auditors today, and based on what you said, I mean, it was just so, it didn't even seem to me like Jeff was as eager as he is, because it's been said, today asked me about the transition, and I said, it really was from the transition, and I think it was really, uh, easy for the board because you'd already been here in the other position and had done such a outstanding job, so that, and then because Dean was supportive of them moving in position. Similar to the transition, when normal really was supporting the angle, so they've been really fortunate to have all those years of consistency. So, it was, it's really good, and they, they are diligent, doing their due diligence, so it's, it is important.
Thank you. I have a motion for, for your mess, one more second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carol, I should say that our next meeting is, uh, two states, action item twenty-six, here is, was a six central, three study session.